It is to be back here at Mount Zion. I have known so many of your rabbis. When I was a wee whippersnapper, I had lots of contact with Dr. Plout, who had so many scholarly interests in our paths crossed in that regard. Also Rabbi Schwartz was very important in my life because I grew up in Chicago and after he left here, he went to Chicago. And I take credit for bringing Rabbi Abrahamson into the Reform movement. Sometime later, I'll tell you that. Now, I don't take credit for her talent and her success. That's all her own. But she was raised in the conservative movement and I'll tell you if you're interested after class, how I managed to pull that one off the Reform Judaism. But I feel so very touched and moved to be here with Cantor Spilker and with Rabbi Spilker. Rabbi reminded me last night when I first arrived by showing me a historical document that our relationship goes back to the year 1989, maybe even a little before that. And because while I was trying to get a PhD, I'm a very poor student. It took me 11 years. And I was the dean of admissions at Hebrew Union College, so I was the gatekeeper and I was trying to get people to come to school. And he was one of those who was in the mix. And I remember him. I remember his, you know, as he was going through school. I remember when he met Rachel and to see Rabbi Spilker, who spent his whole rabbinate here in Mount Zion and all that he's done and see what's become of him. Even though I, again, and this is not false modesty, I deserve no credit for any of it because I was not his teacher directly and I, and I, I have nothing to do with his talents or raising him up. That was his rabbis, to his rabbis' credit. I'm sure you can all understand how fulfilling it is to see people come to the Hebrew Union College, study, transform slowly over five years into young rabbis and then to be privileged to live long enough to see all that they're accomplishing. It's very fulfilling. And I want to thank the rabbi and the whole apparatus here at Mount Zion for the warm welcome. Now, in speaking of Rabbi Spilker, I volunteered to teach this session because the truth is, I'm sure after 25 years Rabbi Spilker could, or Rabbi Adler could teach the Bible much better than Gary Zola. It's not my area. I know what a rabbinic student knows and I've never focused on, in any depth on the Bible. But being an American Jewish historian, I thought I would spend some time teaching you what I know. And it just so happens there's an intersection where I can teach you something about the portion, but also teach you something about American Jewish history, which is what my ambition is today. Now, first of all, let me ask this question. Does anybody know what a rabbinic Bible is? It's a technical term. I know Rabbi Spilker knows, but does anybody else know? Okay, a rabbinic Bible is a technical term and what it means is it is the Bible, but what comes with the Bible are commentaries. And it's broken down verse by verse. And this is a tool that is used by all scholars of the Tanakh. And the rabbinic Bible not only covers the Torah, but it covers all the books in the Bible. So for example, if you're open to page eight is the rabbi told you to do and since I know we all obey our rabbis, especially in the Reform movement, we, you're, you're open to page eight. So you see there's a line and then there's a commentary on the line. Now, in a rabbinic Bible, a real rabbinic Bible, you might have Rashi or Nachmanides or other commentators and you, it, it literally what it is, is it's an opportunity to do a close study on every line. Now, in a certain sense, the plout that you use is sort of like that. And one could sort of say the commentaries are sort of similar, but a true rabbinic Bible is you see the text and then all around the sides and so forth, there are commentaries that pertain from different people. So what I'm introducing you to is a satire on the rabbinic Bible. And the person who wrote this is a man by the name of Gershen Rosenzweig. And for those of you who have access to the pamphlet, his picture is right here on the cover. If anybody knows the name Rosenzweig and is thinking of the philosopher Franz Rosenzweig, there's no relationship. Some of you who were here last night also heard me speak about the Eastern European Jews coming here in the 1880s. This is when the American Jewish community ballooned from a modest sized community. There were approximately, we're guessing, nobody knows for sure, nobody knows, but probably 300 or 400,000 Jews here in 1878 in all of America. By the year 1900, which is approximately 30 years later, there were 2 million Jews. And this comes from the avalanche of Eastern European Jews. Probably most of us who have a long Jewish lineage, most of us in this room somehow are connected to Eastern European Jew. Of course, in certain cities like St. Louis or Cincinnati, I have to watch that because that's where, those are strongholds of the Central European Jews, like the, what we often just label as the German Jews, who came here like with Isaac Mayer Wise in the middle of the 19th century. Now, when these people came, if you remember last night, I said that they, most of them landed in big metropolitan areas and that's, you know, and even, even, even here in St. Paul, there was a sudden ballooning of these, what they, they, the St. Paulians referred to them as refugees. And what to do with these people? Now, mostly when people think of the immigration of the Jews from Central Europe, from Eastern Europe, you think of New York and Lower East Side. And today, now that nobody lives in the Lower East Side unless it's regentrified, there's a tendency to be very nostalgic about the Lower East Side. That then there were the good old days where if it was wonderful, everything was fantastic, you know, Yiddishkeit was all over the place. People spoke Yiddish. There was Yiddish theater. There was Yiddish music. You could walk down the, you know, and get, get, get kishke on the street and, you know, it was wonderful. And everybody was Jewish and everybody was traditional and everybody knew everything and it was fantastic. And look what's happened to us. We're all assimilated and, you know, blah, blah, blah. And when you really read about the Lower East Side, you would discover that it was a hellhole. It was a terrible, terrible world. And that is why, and in all of American history, no immigration wave has ever done this. And that is in, literally in one generation, the Jews of the Lower East Side lifted themselves out of that area and got out as quickly as they could. Almost in one generation, they began to move to Harlem and to other parts of the island and then even Brooklyn because it was a terribly overcrowded, you know, the tenements. I mean, today we have this tenement museum that people go to and I'm all in favor of it, you know, but there's a sort of a nostalgia to it that you have to make sure that you realize this was not Disneyland. This, this was not Jewish Disneyland. It was very unpleasant. One of the immigrants who came over was Gershen Rosenzweig. And Gershen Rosenzweig was what we would call a maschil. Does anybody know what a maschil is besides Rabbi Spilker? Okay. And Rabbi, if there are people who are online who are raising their hand or whatever, let me know because I don't want to. The, I do teach blended all the time and the only thing is it's hard for me to see because you, you folks who are at home look a little small to me, not, not too small, but a little small. So if you want to participate, wave vigorously. Okay. Yes, sir. What's a maschil?
Isn't it someone who makes sure that the kitchen is kosher?
Okay, yeah, right. You're, 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 you're thinking of a mashkiya.
Oh, you're right, right.
No, a maschil, the best way to translate it is what in English, as far as I can tell is, is the word is an enlightened person. And I'm now going to do this very quick and dirty because we don't have time, but you know, when, when, you know, when you were, when, that was sort of a code name, the maschil. And most of these people were muskilean, which is men, but there were muskileos. There were enlightened women. And enlightenment meant that you not only knew and came from a Jewish upbringing, but it meant that you had been exposed in some way to modern Jewish thinking and to the world outside of learning, the broader world of learning. Let me, let me just take a minute and, and explain how this would happen. So it's clear to you. Typically in, in Europe, in a traditional home, you're a little boy because girls had a different path, little boy, when you're five or six years old, you have already learned your ala bet and you learn how to read. And as soon as you can read so that you can begin to study, you're not going to public school. There was no public school. You're, if you're, if you're exposed to any learning at all, you're, you're sent to a, what's called a cheder, a room to learn. And in that cheder, as quickly as possible, five, six, seven years old, you, you're introduced to this book that we're looking at right now. You're looking at Leviticus. Does anybody know why that would be the first book as opposed to something a lot more fun, which would be Bere sheit or Genesis or Exodus, which is filled with stories? Anybody know why they would get you right into Leviticus where you want to break your teeth on all the laws? In a way, I will keep going. In other words, well, here's the hint. It had to do with where you would go next to study after you studied this. What would you be studying after the Bible? The Talmud and the Talmudic laws are all, all come from the places in the Bible where, you know, in the, in the Torah where you find the laws. So the first thing you need to do is know the Torah laws, then you can go on and study the Talmud. But what about Genesis and what about Exodus? You don't need to learn that. I mean, you learn that through the holidays. You learn that through being at home now. So if, if you can imagine how lucky these kids were, you know, six, seven years old, they're reading Leviticus, right? And then they go on and start to learn a little Talmud. Now, at about 10 years old, 11 years old, most of these people had to go to work unless, unless you were what was called a baki, meaning you were brilliant. And if you were really a good student in Talmud, then you, the community would help you to go to advanced yeshiva and you would continue your studies because the community would support you. The maschil would be someone who got to that level and then something went wrong. What went wrong was somehow this brilliant, learned 16, 15 year old would be exposed to something in the outside world. By the way, it's what's, like what's happening today in a lot of the New York community where, you know, that, that the internet is the curse, right? They, they're not allowed to listen to radio. They're not allowed to listen to TV, but you know, once they find the internet, it could steer them what they call off the dereh, off the path. Well, this would happen in the 1800s. Could be philosophy, could be literature, Russian literature or Polish literature, whatever it was, it would take these people into a world that was sort of forbidden and they were interested in. And then once they got bitten by this, they wanted to learn more and more about modern learning. But they were learned Jews. Now, that didn't mean always. Sometimes it meant they left Judaism, meaning they, they became more like liberal Jews, but not always. Sometimes they remained connected to orthodoxy, but, but they were knowledgeable beyond that. And the label for these, this broad category of people were called muskilean. My fellow here today was a maschil and he was a brilliant, brilliant student. You, you'll see in a minute how brilliant he was. He knew the entire Bible. He knew the entire, he knew the entire Talmud practically by heart. He knew the prayer book by heart, but he was also a maschil. He had learning from the outside world. Now, this man Rosenzweig is very interested in being a writer. And he writes poetry and he writes all sorts of material, but one of his specialties is satire. He specializes in satire. He comes to the United States and here he is coming from a part of Poland where he was, you know, very learned and, and respected. And he gets thrown into this world of the Eastern European Jew on the Lower East Side. He's in America and the adjustment is very difficult. And there are all sorts of problems that these Eastern European Jews, these refugees face. And Rosenzweig is not always able to do the work he wants to do. Very often he ends up being an editor for Yiddish newspapers, but he wants to write in Hebrew. He loves Hebrew. He knows Hebrew. He's crazy about Hebrew. Now, by the way, this is also important to note that because he loved Hebrew didn't mean he was a Zionist or that he was going to go and live in Israel. This is in the 1880s, 1890s. This is before that. So there were people who, these muskilean, just like some of you know, there were these great Yiddish writers, right? You know, we vaguely know that. Well, there were these great Hebrew writers too at the same time, but there was no spoken Hebrew. So how did they put their Hebrew together? How did they write Hebrew? They borrowed it from the Bible or from the Talmud and they patched it together. And they did that because these muskilean who are Hebrewists, because they, they just loved Hebrew and they saw it as the classical language of the Jewish people. Just like Greek was the classical language of the Greeks and Latin was the classical language of the Italians. Hebrew was our distinguished, it was a language of the, of our patriarchs and they wanted to write a literature. Gershen Rosenzweig, when he died in 1914, was referred to as the Samuel Clemens Mark Twain. He was the Mark Twain of Hebrew. I'm not so sure it's, in, in some way that may be the case, but you're going to see in a minute. His, his satire was a little bit more biting in some respects than Mark Twain. So to, to get you into this literature quickly, since we don't have a lot of time, if you turn now to page one, you'll see that as you open your booklet, you'll see that I just reproduced for you some of his publications that were published in New York. Remember, he comes to the United States in 1888 and he dies here in the United States in New York in 1914. He holds down lots of different jobs, but he loves to write. This is his interest. And he publishes, as you can see, a book of poems. He publishes, if you look on the lower right side, you'll see a newspaper that lasted only a year, a Hebrew newspaper called Ha Deborah. Ha Deborah and Deborah, of course, as you know, is the prophetess Deborah, but there's another word.
Words.
What?
Words. Devorin.
Who would know Deborah? Deborah is, also devora is, is, is the bee, is a bee and the bee has a sting. So that I think is what he's got going on here. That was, that lasted about a year. And anybody can read besides Rabbi Spilker, anybody can read on the lower left-hand side. This is one of his most famous works, which I'm not going to teach you today, but I, I studied. Can read that Hebrew? Yes, yes, that's right. Who said it? Yes. Who said it? Talmud Yankee, the Yankee Talmud. And that's, that's a, that's a Talmud. Just like we're going to study the rabbinic Bible, it's a Talmud with commentaries and it's all about America. On the top is a copy of his book of poetry. He also wrote epigrams in Hebrew, very clever epigrams. I want to just quickly show you just one paragraph of one of his most famous poems, which will give you a sense of the whole spirit of his writing and then we'll do more, okay? Or at least a little bit more. Now, it's very important, friends, don't approach this material with judgment. In, in other words, be open to what's going on. He is living in a hellhole. He's, he was a distinguished scholar who comes here as probably is in his early 30s when he comes here and he's faced with this crazy world of America. And he's writing Hebrew and his audience is this very erudite, small group of people who can read his stuff. It was probably more people then, than today, but it still was a small group. By the way, if you are thinking now, how did he make money? And how did he live and who bought this? The answer to your question is you see, he would say to you, you think just like an American. They were worried about money. All you think about, you Americans, is how to make money. He wouldn't have cared about that. The best thing I can liken it to is, does anybody have any friends who are Civil War fanatics and dress up in Civil War costumes and go out on weekends and drag cannons around? And does anybody know anybody like that? You do. Okay. Go tell me what's the purpose of that?
They have fun.
They like it. It's what they want to do and they get all turned on by it. And they'll, and for most of us, it makes no sense. You want me to go out and schlep a cannon and put a costume on and run around and pretend like I'm in a battle again? And who wants to do that? They want to do it because they love it. And this is the same way you should look at this. They loved it and they didn't care about making money. They just did it because it was important to them. Yes.
Has much of Rosenzweig's work been translated into English or German?
You're, that's what I, that's a great question. I may be one of maybe six people in the world who know anything about this. But I'll tell you something. This is a true story. I was once coming back from Israel. And you know, when you come back from Israel, go to Israel, sometimes you end up sitting, sitting, sitting next to an Orthodox Jew. And I'm sitting next to a, a Hasid and he's got, you know, a big fur hat on and his, man, at that time he was about my age. And I'm, was translating something of Rosenzweig and it was something from the Talmud. And I'm sitting on the plane working and I can see he's looking at the Hebrew and he's looking at it, looking at it. And eventually he says to me, he was in Israeli. He says, can I see that? So he takes a look at it and he, he reads it and he says to me, who is this? You know, this is all in Hebrew. So I told him very quickly what I told you and he says, this man was a baki. He immediately knew he was a genius. And in, you'll see, you'll, you'll get a sense of this. Now, on page number two, we're just going to do one paragraph. If, if you know any Hebrew at all, stick with it. But if you, you just, if Hebrew is completely beyond you, you don't know even how to, it's like you're looking at squigglings. Then I translated it for you and you'll find the translation on page five. Okay. Or if you want, you can flip back and forth between five and two. Does anybody know enough Hebrew to try to read the Hebrew for me? Anybody either at home or here? Slowly, yes. If you read, if you know it. Okay, you're going down too fast. What, tell me, how would you pronounce the title of the poem?
I'm here, I'm here. I don't, I'm here with, with the K. I don't know.
Yeah, right. America.
Oh.
You see, it's America. Now, the reason you were thrown off is because there's an extra yud after the reish, because we would typically spell it America. But he throws the yud in there to make sure that it's pronounced the way the immigrant would pronounce it. America. Okay? Now, keep going. Now you're doing great, great. The first line, by the way, I just want to make for, you know, to, to make sure of my bona fides. This would be read with an Ashkenazi Hebrew. It would, that was meant to be read with the Ashkenazi pronunciation, not the way we speak Hebrew today, but I can't fake that and it's not important for right now. It, it, just know that the whole way it was, the rhythm of it would have been with the soft s at the end and, and the komet's aw as opposed to the way we speak Hebrew today. Okay, try to read that first line.
Eretz tova, I'm here, re, ka, ba, kol, mivorech.
Very good. Eretz tova, America, ba, kol, mivorech. Now, this is not so hard. Who knows what Eretz is? Right. Who knows what tov is? Okay. And everybody knows what America is. So America, he says, is a good land. Ba kol, what is ba kol mean? In everything, it's mivorech. Well, you all know that word. It's from Baruch. Everything is blessed. See how easy that is? Everybody knows Hebrew. All right. Second line. Want to try second line?
Admata, ka, eden, lehem, la, ove, no, tanet.
No tenant.
No tenant.
Excellent. Okay. Admata, ka, eden, that sentence begins. Adama, anybody happen to know what adama is? No, it, it, well, yes, but it, it comes from, both words come from the same place, but adama, anybody know? Dirt or land? Right. It's land is ka, eden. Like Eden. So if you're with me, the first line, he says, America is a great place. It's blessed in every way. Its land is like Eden. It's like the Garden of Eden, America is. Lehem, what is lehem? Bread. La ove, what's an ove? An ove is a worker. Lehem, la ove, no tenant. It gives bread or it's able to feed its workers. You don't go hungry in America like you do where I used to come from, right? You can, you can find food in America. All right. Next line. Yes, please.
Maybe this is all fake, but the vowels are in the original or they're not?
Yes, the vowels are in the original. Yes. Okay, definitely. Okay. Now, I'm going to read on because we want to get to the rabbinic Bible. The next line is ka, regel and noj, ba, oz, dorechan, which means the regel is leg. So it means the human beings lay in America strides with oz. Adonai, oz, la, amo, yee, ten. Oz is strength. So they, when you say that the person strides or walks his So, when you say that the person strides or walks his leg with strength and dignity. In other words, a human being is a human being in America, not, you know, serfs and, you know, plebeians and, you know, patricians. But everybody is a mensch in America. And then he says, and this, you'll love this, ki, because, because the light and drawer is freedom, because the light and freedom of brita nehemenet. Brit, anybody know what brit is? Right, I always have to say that, because a lot of people say circumcision. That's the Milat. But he says, "Because of the light and the freedom of America's brit." Anybody can guess what the word, what the brit he's talking about? What's the covenant he's talking about? That constitution. You see, this gives you an idea of how he would build his Hebrew, because he didn't have a word for constitution. Like, the Israelis invented a word for constitution, right? Their word is constituzion, right? But he didn't have constituzion. So, so he had to create the words, so he goes to what he knows, and that's the covenant. But that's what he means, he means because of the constitution, that's why we have all of this. Then, I'll just quickly go, and if you're watching the English, you can see, he says, even am, you all know the word am, even a people that is migas, and migas is a rare biblical word, very unusual, and it means to be pushed down or oppressed. So even an oppressed people, here, he's probably talking about the Jews, even an oppressed people, forever oppressed, that's what me'as means, always oppressed, has found in America no fish, its soul, its breathing room. And then it goes on, because aritsim and paritsim, simply means, it's, both of those words are right from the Bible. It means, because the bad guys in America, they cannot, they will not succeed. And then, the last two lines are replicated in every single verse. He says, but achain, and this is the powerful part. Achan, he says, but, achain is a fancy word for aval, or but. Which means, Israel has created slavery in the midst of its freedom. And then the last line, you all can read, because he says, po, in this country, because of America, and look, he makes a play on this. You see how it sounds like America? And what is ami riqhu mean? Anybody know what is ami? Am shalay, ami. My people, riq is empty, hu. My people has become hollow or empty. In other words, and that's a play on America, that, in other words, it's like a homonym. So, if you read the English on your own when you go home, you will see that every single paragraph follows this pattern. He shows how wonderful America is and how blessed it is. And yet, what have we done with this freedom? Is we tossed away the opportunity to be better Jews. Turn just one, one last minute. If you turn to page five, which is the English, I'll just give you another example, but this time in English. Look at verse three. He says, "America is a melting pot. Many races and nations are merged together, their anxieties abate." In other words, instead of all the battles between different groups that, you know, characterize Europe, in America, you know, he's picturing this in, of course, the most positive way. We, I'm sure that the same kind of baloney that we have today, you know, existed then too. But he's beginning with this, the greatness of America. There is no fear, for each and every soul lives by his faith. You can even sense from the English, he borrows that right from, you know, each man shall, that's from Hotokah, each man shall live by his faith. And he says, you know, everybody can pray the way he or she wants in America. He says, "And many nations in America live together without distinctions or separations." Well, it's probably true, on the Lower East Side, there were the Irish and the Germans, and everybody lived together. He doesn't mention at this part of the poem that they were beating each other up and so forth. But, okay, you know, everybody in America, this is the positive part. And then he says, "But aval, you know, achain. In America, the splintering of Judaism is limitless, because the Jews plead to deceit and condone corruption." Now, we could spend the rest of the 15 minutes that I have exploring, what does he mean by that? Well, he could mean lots of things, right? He could mean the fact that Jews cheated each other. He could mean, he's talking about the different religious wars that are going on, you know, the Orthodox and Reform, which was battled on in this time. He could be talking about people who robbed other Jews. This went on all the time, you know, the people who were here longer cheated the people who came here earlier. Who knows what he's talking about? But the main point is, he's saying in this verse, "Look, here in America, everybody lives together, everybody's equal, this is the ideas of America, and what do we Jews do? We fight with each other." See, and every paragraph takes this. Now, the reason I wanted to spend so much time doing this, if you now turn to page eight, you'll begin to understand the humor that, or better word to use, is the bitter satire that comes from this material he called Yalkut Gershoni. That too is humor. Rabbi Spilker won't get it, because there is a famous Midrashic collection that is very well-known, a wonderful collection of Midrashim on the Bible called Yalkut Shimonim. And everybody knows that. So, of course, yalkut is an Aramaic word that means a bundle or a gathering or a collection. And so, he calls his collection Yalkut Gershoni, as opposed to Shimonim, because his name is Gershoni. And this, he wrote rabbinic commentaries on about 14, maybe 12, 14, something like that, portions. He didn't ever have a chance to complete every single portion, because his newspaper went out of business. But this was a feature in one of his newspapers, the Debra, that I showed you. And it appeared every week, and every few editions, he would bring in what he called Yalkut Gershoni, where he would comment on the portion. And it just so happens that one of them is on our portion for today, Parshat Emor. So now, the rabbi began by showing you the first verse. And if you want to open your plouts to 819, you'll see that I actually made reference last night to the opening words of the verse of the portion Yeah, I spoke about that last night, you know, they want to know why so many omers? Why is the Torah say it so many times? And I pointed out that Rashi says, well, the first is, the time the word is mentioned, you're supposed to tell the kohanim who are alive then, and the second is for the kohanim who will come in the future. I connected that to my talk. But it goes on, and it says these words, and if you read the English, it says, "No one shall defile himself for any dead person among his kin." This is not so easy to understand, but remember, he's talking to priests, that the Bible is, Moses is. So, if you take a look at page eight, you see that he is telling you, "I'm commenting on that verse." And if you look at the English, that's the verse he says, "I'm commenting on, no one shall defile himself for any dead person among his kin." And then we'll skip the Hebrew because of time, and you'll just read my translation. This is my translation. "This is a stern warning to wealthy Jews, who ascribe a mark of cleanliness or cleanness to non-Jews, and a mark of defilement on their own people." Let's stop there and think about, what is he saying? Think about what he's saying, what's his criticism here?
Wealthy people, like he's living amongst people that are not doing the right thing.
Right, who are the wealthy people? Are they Jews or not?
They're Jews.
They're wealthy Jews.
Speak loudly when you speak.
Yeah, she says, yes, okay, I'll try to repeat. Wealthy Jews, the kohanim, they're the high-class Jews. Maybe he's talking about the German Jews who were Americanized. Maybe he's talking about some of the Eastern European Jews who've made money. And what is his criticism? What, yes, please.
Trying to assimilate. And so they see the others as, you know,
Exactly.
oppressed person, you want to
Exactly. Exactly, precisely. She said, for those of you who are listening to me at home, she said that these, it's clear he's criticizing Jews who have made it. And instead of admiring the Jews or Jewish people, they want to admire the non-Jews. They want to be, they want to assimilate, they want to be like everybody else, and not to be like Jews. So, we read on, he says, "They view them," and I'm putting in brackets what he means, the non-Jews, meaning the people they admire. They view them as people who are kosher. And I'm pointing out that my translation, this is in a way an interpretation, because the words he uses is, they view him as those who had a pardi or a klef, huh? Right? Well, that's kind of a weird expression, but it also, remember who the readers are. These are people who would know what he's talking about. And I have to explain it, because, listen, I had to get help with this too. This is really deep into the text, you got to know what his allusions are. But I think what he, I'm pretty sure what he means is, that he looks to the non-Jews, as they're the kosher ones. And, but as for his own or their own people, the Jews, they won't give a penny. And just stop and think about what he's doing, you know, and the world that he's living in. So many poor people on the Lower East Side, and they come from a world where, as you, if you remember, you know, in Fiddler on the Roof, right? The beggar in Fiddler on the Roof, you know, he says, alms for the poor, alms for the poor. He says, you know, "I can't give you what I gave you, I've had a bad week." And the beggar says, "Because you had a bad week, I have to suffer?" You know, and this is, it's all, but the truth is that in the Eastern European, if somebody had money, you had the right to go and say, "Look, I need help from you." In America, it was all different. You had to go to the philanthropy office, and you had to prove that you needed money and all of that. He's griping about this. And then he says, "And for this reason," he says, "The scripture says, 'One must not defile his own kin,'" meaning, this is why the Bible, this is what the Bible really means. Don't look down on your own people. See how he relates it to America? All right, let's keep going, we only have a few minutes. Yeah, any comments, please, just jump in, because I talk in one hour and 15-minute segments, so, yeah.
The Torah, the statement itself is the thesis of Sophocles' Antigone. And he completely changes it around. I don't know if he knew Antigone, but that's a good story.
Well, it's possible, it's possible. I didn't, I myself, you know, am unfamiliar with what you're saying, so I can't comment. But he was a learned man. He was a learned man, and beyond just the text. Okay, so let's go to verse two. So if you take a look in your plouts at verse two, it says, and the English, if you look at it, is, it's connected to verse one, meaning, you shouldn't defile yourself for any person except, the verse goes on, verse two, "except for relatives that are closest to you." Meaning, if you're the priest, you don't defile yourself, you don't come into contact with the dead unless it's the people who are closest with you, and then it's explained in the Torah. Unless it's your mother, your father, your son, your daughter, or your brother. I presume your sister too, but who knows? So, the verse he's dealing with is, "except for the closest of your kin." That's the verse he's commenting on. And what does he say? "All that people are forbidden to do to strangers, they feel entitled to do to their relatives." Remember, it's a continuation of what we just read. So we're still talking about the kohanim in America, which for him, in this satire, is the hoidi toei, right? Those Jews who have made it in some way. And what he's now picking out is what? That what they are forbidden to do to people they don't know, they're okay to do to their own relatives. Who can interpolate that? What is he now saying? That's right, that's exactly right. In other words, you, these people in the Lower East Side, these Jews who have made money, you know, they wouldn't treat people they don't know, like non-Jews, this way. But their own family, their own relatives. And by the way, there was such things, you know? You know, people would come on a boat, right? And they'd arrive on the Lower East Side, ain't nowhere to stay. But they had an uncle, right, or a cousin, or a friend's uncle, or whatever, and they would stay. But then after a while, you know, these places were crowded, and they'd say, "You got to get out, or you got to pay rent." And, you know, and so, you know, there was a lot, it was a tough world. And so, he's griping about that. And then he says, let's see, bikaro? Let's see, I, so, here, he takes a verse from a different place. He takes it from Leviticus 10:3. And he says, in this verse, which is in bold in English, "I will be sanctified in them that come near to me." Which means, "Know that even the high priest, who is thoroughly pure and holy, can be defiled by his next of kin." In other words, he's saying, I mean, this is what I think, how I would interpret. He's saying that if you screw your own relatives, no matter how much money you have, and no matter how great you think you are, and no matter how great you think you are, you can be defiled as a human being. So, we're almost at 10 o'clock. And you, you, with this basis, you can read the few other comments that you have here. I think that, that, you know, it, all you have to do is open up your Bible and look at the verse. Now, usually, the verse, and I, I've footnoted everything, so you can find it. Usually, he takes a piece of the verse. So sometimes, it's helpful to go to the actual Bible and read the whole verse. And even if you don't know the Hebrew, read it in English, and you'll see. So, like, for example, just very quickly, 21:5, "they shall not shave smooth any part of their head", you know, this is part of the priest, you're not supposed to shave, and that's where, you know, that's where the peyote come from and all of that. And he, what is he, how does he deal with that? He says, "well, this warning was for the generation of the wilderness who dwelled in their tents and sukot, and did not understand the significance of the first of May". And I am, I'm, I'm not 100% sure what the first of May means here. "In our own day, it is a day that landlords raise the rent", that, that's all I can think of. Meaning, that your lease is renewed in May, the first of May. I thought it could be every month, but maybe it is. And then he says, "tenants who dwell in the lowest levels of human existence are expected to pay rent, and then an additional 20% above and beyond", he's now griping about the terrible conditions that are the living conditions. And every month, or every May, or whatever it is, the landlord says, "I'm gonna raise rent", and what do you do? You gotta either move, or you gotta pay it. And what if you can't pay it? And these tenants are permitted to pull out their hair. In other words, okay, you can't shave any part of your head, meaning, can't shave it, can't put a razor to it, but the people who face raising rents can pull their hair out, out of frustration. And he doesn't mean that literally, it's a joke. It's a satire. And then he says, "this teaching we have learned in the Ashiva shell Rabbi Yankee", and you can see it in the Hebrew, "mimidrasha shel rabbi Yankee", and, you know, in, in other words, to put it in simple English, these poor tenants, they are working 14, 15 hours a day, and the landlord, you know, where they already have horrible living conditions, the landlord comes every periodically and says, like, you know, "you, you owe me more money, I've gotta raise the rent. If you can't pay the rent, find another place", and then you have to move. And this, this teaching is what we learn in America. You know, this is what you learn in the land of the Yankee. You can read the, the other few that I've done for you. And I, 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 I hope, you know, I know that usually what's fun in Torah study is, everybody gets a chance to talk about the Torah, the text, and offer your opinions on it. But as I said, this was something I studied, and that is very rare. And I wanted to give you a chance to learn about it, because it's likely you'll never hear about this again. And maybe for some of you, you're gonna be happy that you'll never hear about it again. But, but I hope you enjoyed it, and it was a pleasure being with you.
Dr. Zola, what year was yalkut, I, I can just speak while, what year was this written?
Okay, so, the, the question the rabbi just asked, for those of you at home, is, "when was this material that I was just teaching right now?" So, for example, the collection of poetry.
No, just, just the Yalkut Gershoni.
Right. You see that, you see the date, which was in 1893, was the Shireen. So, America, which I taught you a little of, that comes from 1893. But the Deborah is, can you read the, anybody read the date? I guess, I'm pretty sure it's something like 1908. It all appeared, every one of the yalkut, every one of these comments on the Torah portion were in the Deborah. And the Deborah was 12 months long, and then it went out of business. So he never finished all of them. He did Bereshit, and a few, Anoah, and a few others, and then he skipped around when he felt like doing it. And then the magazine never continued, so it's not a complete. So I went through every issue of the Deborah. I pulled out all of the comments on the Torah portions that he made. There were, like I said, about 10 of them or 12, and I translated them. I want to publish this one day, but I just haven't had the chance. I think people would enjoy it. But it takes a lot of footnoting, right? You have to explain all that I, you know, I have to, would have to do in writing, what I just did for you. So.
Yeah, because what's fascinating is how brief he is, and all with humor, which is, says a lot about American, American humor, actually, that derived from this time period as well, in this very perceptive.
Right. And, and as the rabbi knows, that's definitely, this characteristic of breh is part of the rabbinic writing anyway. So one of the things, challenges of, let's say, Talmud study, is everything is often apocopated. And you need to know, sort of, you need to be able to read into, or you have to be, that's why you need a teacher to teach you Talmud, because you need, you know, if you just translate it, you may not understand it, because it's like code language. And he imitates that. That's why that Hasid said to me, "this, this guy's, this guy knows". A lot of times, Americans today, Rabbi, don't like this material, because when they hear parody, they think, "oh, huh huh huh", you know, "it's gonna be funny and make me belly laugh", but this is satire. This is bitter. Sometimes, it's humorous, that it, you know, like Rabbi Yankee and stuff. But, but sometimes, it comes from the kishkes, it comes from the inside and the suffering. We should never forget how, you know, I, 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 this will be the last thing I say, I promise. But I, I rode in, in Uber on my way from Philadelphia to the airport to get to here. I, my driver was from Ghana, and he immigrated here. And he was telling me how he loved America, and that most Americans are wonderful. And I said to him, "Well, you know, my grandfather was an immigrant", and I said, "I'm grateful to him". He was 16 years old when he came here. That's a story of most of you who are around this table and at home. We all have immigrant relatives who suffered, so that we could be where we are today. And I told him that, and he said, "I know you're right", he said, "I know you're right", he says, "I know my children and my children's children are gonna thank me for coming to America". "America has plenty of problems", he said. This is the man forgotten. He says, "I tell you, I know America has plenty of problems, but they should, Americans should go to Ghana, and then they'll know how grateful they should be to live in America". That doesn't mean, by the way, that I'm, I'm inured to the idiocy that is going on, and the corruption, and all the sicknesses that we all face. We, it, but sometimes, you have to put things in perspective, and that's what he was saying to me. So anyway, don't forget about the world these guys came to, these Eastern European Jews. It wasn't, it wasn't always a happy place. That's part of history too. You gotta teach the truth, not just what we wanted to be, but what it really was. Okay.
Yes, your call, thank you. Thank you all for training us. Shabbat shalom. See you soon, take care. Bye-bye. Please be in touch if you have any comments too, about any of the, how it's all worked for you. So, email me directly.